Call a meeting to order, roll call please.
Chair Rankin.
Here.
Vice Chair Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
Member Hawkins.
Here.
Member Gleene. Member Anderson.
Here.
Member Wall.
Here.
We have a forum.
We need a motion please.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adjourn to executive session, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Folks, we'll be in executive session for probably half hour or so, we should be back and hopefully have the meeting started at 6 o'clock. Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn from executive session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Executive session on a special meeting that we held this evening was on the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One and Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two. Didn't have anything to do with the normal business that would be later in the meeting. Brent?
New business, Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One, discussion and possible action of adopting Resolution MRCFD-1, 135-16, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One approving and authorizing the sale and issuance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2016, and all matters related thereto, prescribing certain terms and condition of such bonds, including the delegation to the district manager of the authority to designate the final principal amount, maturities, interest rates and yields and other matters with respect to such bonds, approving the form and authorizing the execution of a placement agency agreement and an escrow trust agreement relating such bonds, awarding a contract for the placement of such bonds and adopting a post issuance tax compliance procedures in connection with the issuance of the obligations of the district. Mr. Mayor, members of council.
How about members of board?
Oh, I'm sorry. Chairman, members of the Board of CFD Number One, pleasure to be in front of you this evening. This item, as well as the item in CFD Number Two, are very much related. Council told me when I started here in Florence that there was an expectation that we were going to take a look at effectiveness, efficiency in government, and that was not just related to town council and the businesses of the council, but also the districts of which you are the Board of CFD Number One at this time. I have been working, and other staff have been working, with Mr. Mark Reader, if, I know Mark's here somewhere, if you'd like to wave, from Stifle, as well as Mike Caffiso from Greenberg Traureg, on the potential to refinance debt in CFD Number One and the next item, which is CFD Number Two. Essentially, the simplest way to explain it in layman's terms is much like loans that all of us take out to mortgage our house. Bonds, specifically general obligation bonds, have been sold in both of our Community Facilities District to finance infrastructure. The rates by which those were financed years ago are much higher than the rates that the market is experiencing today. There's a couple reasons for that. Part of that has to do with the bond market, part of that has to do with the newness of the subdivision in 2006, 2007, as well as the fact that the town and the district didn't have a bond rating at that time. So, it's kind of like any of us going to purchase a car, a house, and you have a low credit rating or a high credit rating, depending upon the rates that you receive and the terms that you have. We've reached a point where rates have been record low of recent and are starting to climb. In terms of CFD Number One, our rate that we have been paying on is higher than 7 percent, and rates are from 2.5 to 3 percent now. So, we can refinance that debt and utilize those savings as part of the district to lessen the burden on the taxpayers over time. So, I'm looking for approval tonight for two separate items, if there's a motion made. One is to give myself and our consultants that the town has used for many years the ability to go out and see if we can refinance these debts to save the ratepayers of CFD Number One and later, CFD Number Two. And number two, to give staff some guidance on how you would like to structure that debt relief, which number one would be long-term relief on the bonds, reducing the term of the bonds, short-term relief on the bonds, or even relief over the term of the bonds, much like any of us may experience when we refinance a home loan or a mortgage. Are there any questions?
And you refer them later as one, two, and three, options one, two, and three.
Sure, options one, two, and three. Option one, long-term. Option two, short-term relief. Option three, even relief over the term of the bond.
Does any member of the Board have any questions, or the Board Manager? Okay, thank you, Brent. Did Mark, did you have anything that you wanted to bring out, Mike? Okay, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution MRCFD-1, 135-16, with option three for the long-term even.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution MRCFD-1, 135-16, to Stifle, right?
To allow the district manager to work with Stifle and Greenberg Traureg to that end.
And using option number three.
Using option number three, yes, sir.
Using that, we'll ask for a roll call vote on this.
Councilmember, our district board member, Wall.
Aye.
Board member Anderson.
Aye.
Board member Guian.
Aye.
Board member Hawkins.
Aye.
Board member Woolridge.
Aye.
Board member Walter.
Aye.
Chairman Rankin.
Aye, motion carries unanimously.
New business, Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, discussion and possible action of adopting Resolution MRCFD-2, 232-16, a resolution of the Board of Directors of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, approving and authorizing the sale and issuance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2016, and all matters related thereto, prescribing certain terms and conditions of such bonds, including the delegation to the district manager of the authority to designate the final principal amount, maturities, interest rates and yields and other matters with respect to such bonds, approving the form and authorizing the execution of a placement agency agreement and escrow trust agreement relating to such bonds, awarding a contract for the placement of such bonds and adopting a post issuance tax compliance procedures in connections with the issuance of obligations of the district.
And again, the same information you presented in option one is the same for, I mean, business, the district one, district two are the same?
Yes, sir. The only difference is they are clearly two distinct districts with different improvements and different activity. It's important that the folks in the audience, as well as those folks watching us on TV, understand that. The rate structure is also different, where I told you we're in excess of 7 percent on the initial issuances for the bonds for CFD Number One. For CFD Two, if I remember correctly, it was about 5.25 percent. So, the amount of savings that can be put back in to the overall financing is less in CFD Number Two, but our consultants have done the analysis and have determined that there would be benefit for both districts to move forward in this fashion.
Were the saving options available?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Board Manager?
No.
Hearing none, I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number MRCFD-2, 232-16, with option three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution MRCFD-2, 236-16. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, again, a roll call vote.
Board member Wall.
Aye.
Board member Anderson.
Aye.
Board member Gleene.
Aye.
Board member Hawkins.
Aye.
Board member Woolridge.
Aye.
Board member Walter.
Aye.
Chairman Rankin.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Need a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn from executive session.
From a special meeting?
Or, I mean, I'm sorry, Merrill Ranch District Number One and Number Two Board Meeting.
I'll second.
We have a set motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We're adjourned from the special facilities district meeting. Regular meeting will call to order, I'll call this meeting to order. I'm just waiting for Lisa now. She gonna catch ya.
Sorry. Mayor Rankin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Gleene?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
We have a forum.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance, and after the pledge, we'll have a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a moment of silence, keeping in mind all the people that died needlessly over in California in that fire, remembering also the ones that lost their lives in the wildfire back in Tennessee. It's called the public for public comment on issue in the jurisdiction of the town council. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. In the back there are speaker request forms, I have two.
Good evening, Honorable Council and other town entities. My name is, I'm Reverend Donald Woolridge, pastor of Union Baptist Church here in the town of Florence. And on this evening, I stand before you gladly inspired and driven by hope slash belief that finally the town of Florence has in place a council, and I'm speaking in terms of those elected that will soon take their position in office. The town has in place a council, I'm sure that's willing through teamwork, to allow the seed of greatness to blossom. I stand before you also a citizen teammate, resolute in the belief this historical town bulges with unlimited potential, to be a haven and a beacon of light for growth and development for all that reside here. To further this opportunity to address you all, I want to congratulate the mayor-elect, Ms. Walter, Bill Hawkins, and the other lady, Kristen Larson. Congratulations, and I want you to know that I'm inspired and I will be praying for you all in your new capacity. I want to go on further on a more personal and intimate personal note, and I address my words to my wife Valerie. I honor and commend you, my dear, for the spiritually principled and your integrity-centered 12 years of service you've afforded the citizens of Florence. And minus your being driven by ego and self-interest, I'm truly impressed by your style of commitment you've demonstrated. Thanks, dear wife, for showing me the bright light into your visions for this town, watching you pour over packets over these years, watching you deal with material for hours and face-down rejection and exclusion due to bias and bigotry as a result of you being the first African-American person and/or woman to be blessed to serve on this council. The many racially charged phone calls you received, I say to you, dear, thank you for teaching me clarified purpose and the importance of balancing one's talents with character. You once spoke to me on denouncing ego. Never you said will you mistreat a citizen or make a decision based on popularity or act irrationally in difficult times, nor would you hunger, anger, harbor, or embrace I say to you further that I view you not only as a leader, but a servant, a lifter. You push the thinking of your council constituents and even folk in this town, and I commend you for the many times I've witnessed you transfer and create your thoughts, transfer your thoughts in an effort to create responsible team members, leaders and servants, coach the development of personal capacities and capabilities. I commend you. I say further to you, continue your journey as you strive to enlarge values for others. I say to you in your journey, when people are esteemed, you said to me, relationships are redeemed. Leaders know that people are an organization most appreciable asset. Scripture you and I have studied, Proverbs 27, presents fundamental on relationship. Don't brag, you said. Don't envy, you said. Be forthright, you said. Don't forsake your roots, you said. You said add value to those that you contact, and you said don't be moved by flattering. God bless you, dear, as you serve with the next council.
Thank you, Donna. Kathy, Adam?
My name's Kathy Adam, I live at 240 East Ruggles, mayor, mayor-elect, council. I wanted to say that four years ago, I was not in the Tom Rankin Fan Club, and over the course of four years in attending the council meetings, as well as many community events, I really appreciate as a citizen of the town and as a member of the HDAC Commission, the work you've put in for us. I do believe that in every decision, you have tried to put Florence first, as you say, and I've seen you at innumerable events that not only sponsored by the town, I've seen you at Country Thunder, I see you at all the parades. I know several people that are friends of mine who have had issues, and I said, well, have you talked to anyone? And, you know, I recommended they talk to the council or the mayor, and one of my friends took me up on it. Unfortunately, she did not call you till 10 o'clock at night, but you graciously took the phone call, and I know of other people that you have just always given us the respect as citizens to listen to our problems that are probably not as big as we feel they are at the time. But I really do appreciate it, and I wanted to say to you and Donna, all the best.
Thank you, Kathy.
And then, secondly, if I could, Brian Martin, I attended the parade, and it was absolutely amazing, and your team, I just, I cannot believe that first they had the parada, and then they come and they do that light parade, which was fantastic, and at the south end of the town, I think it was the Florence Team Council, they were rocking the streets. Kids five years old, 70 years old, I have never seen so many people dancing well and enthusiastically. I mean, I thank the town, it was an amazing event, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Kathy. Does any other member of the public have anything you'd like to say? Uh-oh, come ahead.
Do I really have to call you mayor? Mr. Mayor and Council, I really was not going to speak tonight, but I feel that I have to speak tonight because I was not happy with Mr. Woolridge, Woolridge, excuse me, speech. I felt that he tore down the entire council, present and past. Yes, Valerie has done a lot, but you know what? Every one of you guys up there have done a lot, and I'm sorry, but that also includes Tom Rankin. I am very, very, very upset that that was allowed to be said this evening. Mr. John, it's been a pleasure knowing you, sir.
Thank you.
And I hope that our friendship will continue.
It will.
Becky, we've been friends a long, long time. Mr. Hawkins, my neighbor, my friend, and that will continue. Oh, man, I just drew a total blank.
Don't call her.
Wa.
Don't call her Mary.
Okay. I apologize. Obviously, I haven't known her as long, but what I do know of you, you guys have all got a lot ahead of you. Ms. Walter, I don't need to say anything because I think you know in your heart and in your mind the way that we feel. And last, but not least, and I certainly didn't want to do this at an open meeting, but I'm going to, because you tore down my husband that has worked hard for the town of Florence and will continue to work hard for the town of Florence, but we cannot even get any respect out of his position, out of the Woolriches. I want this town to know, I have been to many, many functions with Tom, many. I have tried my best to introduce Valerie, and she turns her back on me. I have tried my best, be nice to the lady, be nice to Donald, include them in everything that I've tried to do for the town, they turn my back, or turn their back on us. I'm sorry, I have nothing nice to say, the same as Donald had nothing to say. I had to get up here and say it. And last, I have to say to Tom Rankin, it's been a long, hard road. It's been a lot of fun, it's been a lot of sorrow, it's been a lot of fights, a lot of arguments, a couple times sleeping on the couch, but the town of Florence has progressed. We've got a great staff, from our town manager all the way down to our librarian, and no matter what, this staff is here for the citizens of Florence. They don't care who you are, they don't care your color, your age, your weight, or anything I hope that Florence continues the progress and always puts Florence first.
Thank you. Any other, hearing none, a close call to the public. Unfinished business, discussion approval November 7th to 21st, 16 council minutes. Does any member of the council have any corrections they made to the minutes? Hearing none, need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 7th and November 21st, 2016, council minutes.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of November 7th and 21st, and 21st, 2016. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Call of the council, John?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I personally would like to thank you for the service that you give to the town, but also the service that you've given me. You've become a friend over the last two years, you've given me some sage advice over that timeframe. I know that you and I have had disagreements, right? But we always respected each other, and that made it a whole lot easier on me and my position, and we always went out in the parking lot and shook hands and said goodnight. And I just want to thank you for all the help that you've given me personally, and I think that all the citizens will tell you the same thing, that they appreciate what you've done for the town.
Thank you, John. Becky?
Yes, I'd like to thank you also, first, for hiring me and putting me in a good position as far as working in the business office to start out with it in Florence, and over the years, we've worked together. You have always put Florence first, no matter what. You have been very unbiased about which section of town gets improvements too. You have fought like a dog for every single scrap you could get and have promoted Florence and gotten us to where we are now. I truly thank you, and I know a lot of citizens do also.
Thank you, Becky. Bill?
Yes, I'm ditto on the two previous. Yes, you've done a great job, you've worked hard, you'll be missed. I hope that we move forward in a positive light and that everybody works towards the same goals of keeping the town moving forward. We've still got a few naysayers that we haven't, and I don't know where they're living, I mean, or if they have their eyes open, but this last four years, we've brought in a number of new businesses, and our events are getting better and better all the time. I think we've got a great future to look forward to, and we will miss you, Tom.
Thank you, Bill. Karen?
It's hard to follow such wonderful compliments. I certainly echo those. In my short tenure on the council, 18 months, pretty quick, I've come to respect Tom, and I think everyone has acknowledged that he's made a difference in this town, and I hope that he will continue to participate in the town, not only governance, but activities, and I know that he will always support what's best for the town.
Thank you, Valerie.
I'll just say God bless you and your family and whatever your future endeavors are.
Thank you. Chair?
Tom, best wishes in your future. Everybody, thank you for coming out this evening to be here with us, and as far as the holiday parade, it was an amazing success. Thank you to all of the hard work and staff, as well as the people who attended.
This isn't my last shot. After we have the presentation down here, I have some things I'd like to say, but congratulations to those elected to the council. Kristen, where'd you go? There you are. Chair, congratulations on being elected mayor. You have a lot of responsibilities ahead of you, I hope you the best. No, I am not through the Florence, I'm not leaving here. I was born and raised here, don't plan on dying, but if I die, I hope I'm here. It'll depend what the good old boy upstairs has to say about that, but it's been a pleasure to work with this council. We've had our disagreements, we've had our ups and downs, more ups than downs. We've accomplished a lot in the last four years. The four years I was out, we kind of stagnated for a while, we came back, things have changed, and they've changed in a hurry. They've changed for the good of Florence, all of Florence. When I say Florence, I'm not talking about one subdivision or one side of the river or not. When I'm talking about Florence, I'm talking about what's in the incorporated city limits of Florence, Arizona, fifth oldest town in the state, just a little bit older than me. But I'll have some more to say down here in a little while. At this time, I'll call the judge forward, Judge Valdez. I will be walking off the stage and the new council member, Kristen, you want to come on up? Will be sworn in after Mayor Walter is sworn in.
Now, if you would, please raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Mayor Walter.
Solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona. And all ordinance of the town of Florence.
And all ordinance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to do the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of mayor. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. If we could have the other three council members? Everyone, please raise your right hand. Thank you, so right there. Aye, state your name. We'll do one at a time. Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona. And all ordinances of the town of Florence. That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same. And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of council member. According to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask former mayor Marcia Day to come to the podium. Can I have a roll call, Lisa?
You sure can. Mayor Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Gleene?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Ms. Marcia Day will be recognizing outgoing Mayor Tom J. Rankin for his dedication and service to the community.
It truly is an honor for me to be asked to make this presentation by Tom. I've known Tom for many, many years, and although we never, we almost didn't see eye to eye for a lot of issues, I've always said, if I needed help anywhere in the world, Tom would be the first one there to help me. And it's that loyalty and love that he has shown to this town for decades also that has truly made this town a better place for us to live. He will be a hard act to follow and his hard work and dedication will not be matched for many years to come. Tom, I thank you so much for making Florence the town that it is today. This beautiful plaque says, and I will read it, "Presented to Tom J. Rankin in grateful appreciation for your fourteen years of dedicated service as an elected official. You were mayor from 2012 to 2016 and 2004 to 2008, and you were on the council from 1998 to 2003." And that is so true at the bottom, it says, "Putting Florence first," because you always have. And also, there, we're presenting you with the 150 banner that's been hanging up on the polls and all of the town staff signed it for you. Thank you, Tom, so much for all your service.
Thank you for the kind words, Marcia. This ain't the last rodeo. Tom Rankin will be back somewhere. Thirty-two of the last thirty-six years, I've spent serving the citizens of Florence. I started off as chief of police in 1980, came back and got on the council, mayor twice. In 1980, I had a budget for the police department, seven officers, thirteen cars, three of them ran, three motorcycles, none of them ran. We had credit at the Chevron Station here in Florence, the mayor owned the station. He gave the town credit two weeks at a time. In order for me to get my police cars fixed where they'd run, Tex Earnhardt, because him and my dad were friends, allowed the town credit if they paid on a monthly basis. Now we have a police department fully staffed, well-qualified individuals on it. What's your budget now, a couple million? Three million dollars. Florence was Florence and Florence Gardens. The prisons weren't part of Florence. We started an annexation under, Andy Ramirez was on the council and him and I went around and got the signatures to annex the prison. And we continued prison, annexing prisons under Kim Buchanan, the town manager. I've worked with and worked under every town manager the town has had. Before that, we had the council, what'd they call it? The what? Well, it was the, the mayor, each council member had a department they were responsible for until we went to the manager, former government. We did a lot of annexing over this last thirty-six years. Town is now sixty-three square miles, approximately. The last four years, we've built an aquatic center that was very much needed here in the community for all the citizens of Florence and those outside of town. We had a beautiful library and recreation building where people can have a lot of fun and learn a lot. Gosh, I even got a road put in out here to 79 that a lot of people are using, and I was told it was crazy to do, but that's Tom Rankin. I'm gonna miss it, but you know, one thing I know, that I am leaving with a staff that I'd put up against any staff in the United States. I got a manager that's only been here a little while, he's proven pretty good. And I got Jess, my redheaded stepchild, who drove me to many, many meetings. An attorney over there, we're not gonna talk about attorneys, though. Cliff knows how I feel. The chief of police that came in here and has taken a lot of heat, but he's doing a good job. The fire chief that's brought our department up to where it should be. You know, in 1994, we had a volunteer fire department prior to 1994. We closed the hospital down. Councilman Ty Morgan and myself saw the need to bring on, upgrading the fire department to bring in paramedics. Damn, we didn't have paramedics, EMTs or IEMTs, but we were able to get the council to provide the money to fully staff this fire department. It's continuously grown. Now we're full staff, have beautiful equipment, good equipment, well-trained officers and firefighters. Got a library, Bonnie Jones, I miss that lady. She kept our library going when it was over in the, where the seniors meet, where I went to school in the second grade, first and second grade. Bonnie kept it going, and then went to the high school, and now when you have rows, you have your own library. What can I say about Parks and Recreation? After the parades Friday night, Thanksgiving weekend with the rodeo parade, all the festivities we're putting on for the kids. That's what we set for, folks, for the kids, the future of Florence, is what we're doing for Florence. Brian, you've got a good department. Then I got a grants person, economic development director, Jennifer, you know, are you out of the Navy now? Okay, you're full-time out of the Navy, so she can put in. Scott, you've done a great job. Chris, here is fairly new to the scene, but we're getting a lot of things accomplished. The biggest thing that you'll see right off the bat will be the permanent light at Adaway Road and Hunt Highway. They're gonna be down here by the end of the year, I was told, but it looks like it might be just a little bit longer. Who knows? I guess there's only about one person I need to, beside, and department heads, tell your staff I appreciate everything that they've done for the citizens of Florence. I know they get a paycheck, but I can tell you what, I've seen your people go beyond what's required of a officer, public worksman, somebody in Parks and Recreation, library helping people. That's what makes Florence successful, is the people. I've left one person out. Huh? Oh, Mark, he knows me. Take a look at our planning department. God, Mark, have we gone, you even got your own building now. And it's, it's not a trailer, it's a prefab, not a prefab, it's... When we annexed Merrill Ranch and brought in, Pulte decided they were coming to town. Mark was here, thank gosh. The amount of meetings we had, the amount of time she put into it, the amount of expertise she was able to apply to the projects going on out there couldn't be bought. The amount of time he dedicated to making sure things were done right, in which I think we are, because I think we've got one hell of a good town, excuse my language. But Mark, your crew did a good job. You know, we were going through the building stages in the county and all these other communities. We're hiring people left and right, left and right, bring them on the town or the county payroll. And when the recession hit, they had to rift. Florence has never rifted an employee out of a job. We planned right. Mark worked his tail end off to make sure that we got the job done that would need to be done. Mark, I want to thank you for everything you did for us. Okay, come here. If many of you have read in the paper not long ago when Governor Mofford passed away, they called her mother, she wanted to be called mother. She can't be my mother, she's too young. But if there was a lady that needed to be called mother of Florence, this is her. She keeps all of us, all of you now, myself, she kept us in line. The smartest clerk in the state of Arizona. One whose friendship I'll live on forever and ever and ever. Keep up the good work, Lisa Garcia. Stay true to Florence, because that's our job. The people out here love you, your council loves you, your staff most of the time loves you, and these other department heads, whoever they may be.
No one's trying to make you cry.
I don't try to make you cry. But ladies and gentlemen, here is the anchor of Florence. This is the lady that makes it happen right here in town, she kept us all on line. And Lisa, on behalf of the citizens, the councils that you've served under, the department heads that have worked under you, thank you very much for the job you've done and keep up the good work. My parting words to the council, we've come a long way. Let's continue going forward. Keep Florence first, put Florence first. And to the mayor, you're dedicated now. You take office tonight, and you should be using that same memo, putting Florence first. Dedicate yourself to the job. And after you've been here thirty-six years, you get to stand down here and talk like this too. Congratulations, Kristen. Karen, Bill, Valerie, John, Becky, thank you very much for serving with me, I appreciate it. And with that... by those concludes.
Madam Mayor, may I say something?
Yes.
Donna, don't, don't you walk right out. I want to talk about you. You know, we've, we've heard Tom's dedication for the last 36 years. It wouldn't happen without Donna, so thank you, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, consent. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda. Unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. There will be three routine resolutions that have an emergency clause. Therefore, I will ask the clerk for a roll call vote after a motion to approve the consent agenda is made and seconded. At this time, I need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Don't, don't, don't we have to go through the consent agenda?
Would you like us to read the consent agenda for the record, Mayor?
I'll read it. Item A, approval of the purchase of two Ford police interceptors for the police department from Chapman Ford in an amount not to exceed $56,542.36. Item B, recommendation of an approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and control on the Coolidge Florence Elks Lodge 2350, special event liquor license application for their In the Mood Christmas Concert Event to be held on December 7th, 2016 at the Anthem Union Center located at 3925 North Sun City Boulevard, Florence, Arizona. Item C, adoption of Resolution 1606-16, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, authorizing Mayor Tara Walter and the Town Manager Brent Billingsley to act as signatories for the transaction of business on all Town of Florence bank accounts and declaring an emergency. Item D, adoption of the Resolution Number 1607-16, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, approving and authorizing Mayor Tara Walter and Town Manager Brent Billingsley to act as signatories for the transaction of business on the Police Evidence Trust Fund at the National Bank of Arizona and declaring an emergency. Item E of Resolution Number 1608-16, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, prescribing standards of financial disclosure for locally elected officials and declaring an emergency. Item F, approval of accepting the Register of Demands ending October 31st, 2016 in the amount of $1,776,509.56. Counsel, that is your agenda. Do you have any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, at this time, I would ask for a motion.
Make a motion. We accept the consent agenda as read.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a seconded has been made. All in favor? And then Lisa will do the roll call. All opposed?
Nay. That roll call threw me off. I'm sorry. We already voted. I was like, what?
Okay, Lisa, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Aye.
Councilmember Gleene?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Now we go on to new business. And item A, discussion approval disapproval of nomination and elections of the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I will now open the floor to nominations. Just a reminder that there will not be a second required for each nomination. The acceptance of the nomination will be considered the second. Opening nominations.
I'll nominate Valerie Woolridge. And the reason I'm doing this is because I feel Valerie will balance out our representation in town.
I'd like to nominate John Anderson.
Okay, thank you. Lisa, are there any other nominations at this time from council? Okay, Lisa, at this time, can we please have a roll call vote?
Um, Councilmember Woolridge, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
A roll call vote is required. First person that receives four votes, that ends the votes, and that's the selection of our Vice Mayor. And so, Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
This is for Valerie Woolridge.
Aye.
Councilmember Gleene?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Nay.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Wall?
Nay.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Guess I have to say aye.
Mayor Walter?
Aye.
And the motion is carried. Vice Mayor Wool is nomin, or Vice Mayor Woolridge is nominated as Vice Mayor.
Congratulations, Valerie.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item B, announcement of the mayor's appointments to the following liaison positions. Mayor Walters, will you make your announcement?
Okay, the following appointments are as follows, and I appreciate everybody expressing their interests, their background and experiences, as well as their time commitments to the Town of Florence. Arts and Culture will be served by Councilmember Hawkins. Arizona Legislature will be served by Mayor Walter. Central Arizona Association of Governments will be served by Mayor Walter. East Valley Partnership will be served by John Anderson. And I also made a note that the East Valley Partnership encourages all members, mayor and council, to actively participate in committees that appeal to their interest or expertise. There will be information distributed on the following: Advocacy and Government Relations, Aviation and Aerospace, Education, Phoenix East Valley National Marketing Committee, Economic Development, Transportation, East Valley Partnership Board of Directors and Executive Committee, which is by East Valley Partnership invitation only. Florence Unified School District will be served by Councilmember Wall. Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce will be served by Councilmember Wall. The Historical District Advisory Commission will be served by Councilmember Gleene. The Industrial Developmental Development Authority will be served by Councilmember Anderson. League of Arizona Cities and Towns Resolution Committee will be served by Vice Mayor Woolridge. Library Advisory Board will be served by Vice Mayor Woolridge. Maricopa Association of Governments will be served by Mayor Walter. Native American Community Tribes, the Tahono Oehorom Village and Hilo River Indian Communities will be served by Vice Mayor Woolridge. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board will be served by Councilmember Larson. Planning and Zoning Commission will be served by Councilmember Hawkins. Public Safety Personnel Retirement Board for Police and Fire will be served by Councilmember Gleene. The Regional Transportation Authority will be served by Mayor Walter. And Town Council will be served by Mayor Walter. And those are the appointments.
What about the Penale Water Augmentation?
Penale Water Augmentation Board will be served by Councilmember Anderson. Thank you, Bill. Okay, at this time, can I please have the town managers report?
Mayor, council members, very brief report tonight. I just wanted to thank all the council members and the staff that attended, participated, and made the Junior Parata Parade, as well as the, the Christmas on Main and Electric Light Parade, such round, just absolutely amazing successes for the community. I was, I was very proud to attend both events and, and be considered a member of, of the staff and this fine team that we have here that's, that's able to put on such community-building event. So my thanks go out to the council, as well as the staff, for their hard work and the ultimate results.
Okay, thank you. Department reports. Does anybody have any questions from the department reports? Department heads, do you have anything that you'd like to add? Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll have a call to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Okay, I do not see anybody at this time. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Hawkins?
Yes, I'd like to thank staff for a great event of Saturday, I mean Friday. It was, it was great. I mean, and the weather cooperated. I would also like to thank Parks and Recreation and the public works. A while back, some constituents called and, where F Mountain is, if you notice there, where that little, there was like a little railroad bridge, a real small one, where people go onto the railroad and then they go hike up the mountain. Well, right there along the roadway, the pavement was really falling off bad. And staff got right on it. They, we utilized some of our recycled asphalt and saved us money there. And anyway, it's already been taken care of and everybody's, I want to thank for the quick response and everything on that. And I'm looking forward to having a great four years, and I hope we're very productive and, and we stay the course and stay fiscally responsible as we have in the past. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Wall?
I don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Gleene?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Larson?
I just wanted to take a moment to thank the council, as well as the staff, for being so kind with their welcome. And I look forward to working with all of you.
And in closing this evening, I would like to thank everybody who came out tonight to support both the outgoing mayor, the incoming council and mayor. I'm looking forward to working with an amazing council and staff, serving the community of Florence. After the adjournment, adjournment, we're going to welcome everybody to a reception in the lobby that was put on by our CAC students. And we very much appreciate their partnership and support as well. So at this time, I adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting dismissed.